All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening and welcome, everybody. First order of business, Tom, take the roll call, please.
Mayor King.
Present.
Councilmember at large, Austin. Councilmember Posma.
Present.
Baker. Baskin.
Present.
Fisher.
Present.
Pashusta.
Present.
Kelly.
Present.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you, Thomas. Item number one is a motion adopting the agenda with the additions. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries item number two as approving our minutes from the December 2nd, 2024, and the truth in taxation hearing on December 4th, 2024. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nothing under item number three, recognitions and awards. Item number four is the consent agenda, looking for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Just want to comment on all the appointments and reappointments to the boards and commissions. It's always very heartening to know that we got 20-plus people that are either re-upping or good folks that are stepping up to be on these boards and commissions. They're always important, and it's great to have a good mix of the people from the community on those. So thank you for those that are re-upping, and thanks for those that said yes and threw an application in, so appreciate those folks. Item number five, under public hearings, we have a public hearing on a five-year capital improvement plan. Tom?
Annually, the city of Austin approves a capital improvement plan for the next five years for the city. The 2025 plan would include those items that are in the budget for next year, and by having the approval would allow staff to then start the process to get those to come to fruition. Items in 2026 through 2029 are more of a planning documents, so they can look into the future as to what their needs are. For the next five years, 2025 through 2029, we're projected to spend just over $102, $142 million on projects. But again, those are all driven by funding sources also. So, for example, we're expecting a grant to pay for Project X, and we don't get the grant, then that project would go away until funding comes forward. Again, this was discussed at work session in the past, and we request approval at this point in time after the public has a chance.
Very good. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on item number five? Hearing done. Counsel, any questions or comments for Tom?
I think the only comment is just a huge thank you to department heads and to staff. I know there's a lot of time and energy and work that goes into this. I know that we use it quite a bit, obviously, to plan our work and work our plan, and so know that it's recognized and feel good about the infrastructure and the growth that we have going on in Austin, so.
Yes, indeed. It's a great planning document. Thank you. Anybody else? Otherwise, looking for a resolution for item number five?
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Under awarding bid, item number six is receiving bids for asbestos abatement at our address, 504th Avenue, City Hall. Stephen?
Yes, there is some floor tile here at the building that was identified through an inspection, and as we looked closer, we found it in other areas of the building. And in order to address this, we went out for bids, and we received bids. Looking at the overall project, we proposed kind of a base area which consists of areas here in the basement of City Hall. That is our base bid. Mavo Systems was the low bidder for the base bid amount of $23,700. We then looked at an alternate number one, which included some of our old conference rooms and some area in the old finance area here in the basement as well. That add alternate was an additional $7,100. And then the add alternate number two, which was $23,900, is for the old engineering area, kind of the intermediate level of our building. And it would be our recommendation that we award the base bid and both add alternate bids to Mavo Systems, Inc. Our budget for this project is $100,000, and their bid with those alternates is $54,700. We do already have some engineering and design costs that have gone into this. So in total, we're pushing about $60,000 with this proposed bid award. And then, once all of that work is complete here in, planned to be completed in January and into February, once that is complete, we'll bring back to you some portion of the remaining budget to put in new flooring in some of these areas. Because once we remove the, in some areas, there's carpet over the asbestos tile, so we have to tear out the carpet to get to the tile, that, remove all of those products, and then we'd be down to a concrete floor. We'll bring something back to you in areas to improve those concrete floor spots. So with that, we would recommend awarding this bid to Mavo.
Very good. Thank you, Stephen. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Lang?
I have a question. Bathrooms down here, how come those aren't included in this? Or are they?
I don't believe there is asbestos tile in the bathrooms.
Oh, okay.
Down here.
All right.
That's previously been removed.
Okay.
So Stephen, that kind of leads to my question. Is this going to remove all of the asbestos possible flooring in the building at this point?
To our knowledge, this will get rid of all of the asbestos flooring. It's hard to say. Something may show up in the future that we didn't know was there, but to our knowledge, this should be everything.
Okay.
And Stephen, does remediation go on while the, sealed up and the building's open, or weekends, or holidays, or how's this work?
Yeah, so the vault in the admin area on the main floor where the admin staff work, that will be done on a Friday night into a Saturday, so when people aren't here. Other areas, like here in the basement, the basement will be sealed off for two weeks. Starting, it'll start after our first council meeting in January, so I think we'll start on January 7th. And then we'll look to have all this basement area completed before the second council meeting in January. So areas will be sealed off, or areas will be done, as indicated, on a weekend if they're heavy traffic areas.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, if no further questions, looking for a resolution. So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0, Your Honor.
Thanks, Tom. Under petitions and requests, item number seven is a resolution approving our tax levy for 2025. Tom?
The city recently had our truth and taxation hearing to discuss both the budget, the tax levy for 2025. At that hearing, it was approved on a 3-2 vote, with two council members absent to approve a tax levy of $9,800,000 for 2025. We request a resolution for that amount.
Very good. Thank you, Tom. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Lang? Or, I'm sorry, Mr. Danker? If not, looking for a resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baskin.
Nay.
Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Resolution passes 4-1, Your Honor.
Very good. Thank you, Tom. Item number eight is a resolution adopting our budget for 2025. Tom?
So the 2025 budget, as discussed at that meeting, will total $49,827,27, funded by LGA tax levy, user fees, et cetera. And based on that budget that was approved on a 3-2 vote, also at the truth of taxation hearing, we'd request council approval.
Very good. Counsel, any questions, Mr. Danker? If not, looking for a resolution adopting the budget?
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0, Your Honor.
Very good. Thank you. Item number nine is resolution authorizing the cancelization of certain ad valorem tax levies. Tom?
And finally, when the council passed a resolution back in 2015 to issue bonds to finance the Austin Utilities capital improvement facility, with that pledged a tax levy if needed. The Austin Utilities collects revenues through their user fee system to pay the debt off on an annual basis. So with that being said, we would request council pass a resolution canceling that tax levy that we could pass on to the citizens.
Thank you. Any questions for Tom, counsel? Looking for a resolution?
Always good to get rid of those. So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0, and a big thanks to department heads and staff for getting through another budget year. We'll file documents with the county and the state starting tomorrow, and we should be good.
Right, and thanks to all. Item number 10 is a motion designating the Austin Herald as the official newspaper for 2025.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 11 is granting renewals of the 2025 licenses for sale of hard liquor on sale and Sunday hard liquor on sale, Sunday wine on sale, and 3-2 beer on and off sale. Looking for a resolution?
So moved.
Second. Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number 12 is resolution approving temporary seasonal wages. Trish, do you have something more than your, just your backup on this? Okay. Looking for a resolution?
I have a request. I'm wondering, on page 34 in your packet, item number four talks about a wage increase for a returning employee. It's set at 50 cents an hour increase for someone returning. I think getting some feedback from department heads that can sometimes set up a problem where someone who's returning is going to make less or the same as someone who's new that year. And I'd like to just increase it to a dollar from 50 cents to give more flexibility. We know it's a tight job market out there. These are hard positions to fill. It would be one more tool in the basket. Of course, you would have to fit within the budgets of the departments, so there's not a budget impact.
Trish, you referenced in your backup that you had some discussion with department heads. Do you have anything to add on that request to go a dollar? Those 50 cents enough in department heads?
No, I don't have anything particular. This was reviewed by all department heads, and Park and Rec Department did indicate, we talked about this potential issue and said we would address it if that came up. We do have some flexibility within the resolution now, as it's written, for that, for certain case-by-case situations. But if you want to make an adjustment, you could do that.
Counsel, any questions of Ms. Weigman?
I do for Jason. Jason, didn't we have a problem a year or two with the pool with 50 cents an hour and people returning and it not kind of causing a problem?
We did have some issues with being competitive with other areas that hire.
Right.
But talking with Trish, we, as she mentioned in the resolution, the issue is if we start an employee at a higher rate, like, let's say, a new employee at 1350, like the resolution states currently, a returning employee for, you know, for their second year, we'd actually start at the same 1350, and that was an issue. But talking to Trish, we do have that authority to make those changes as needed. So depending on the circumstance, I think we can address that as written.
Is it 1350 for all part-time?
It depends on the position.
That seems.
Height for, or if, or if they're coming in with experience as well, so.
I'm on the chart. We're 17 bucks an hour.
11.
Huh? There were 17 bucks an hour on there somewhere.
There are some positions that start at a higher wage.
1350 seems a little low for any position.
The one change this year that we talked about was moving the lifeguard from category two, which was 13 to 16, into category three, which is 1350 to 16. So it gives us that starting wage leeway right off the bat. So that's one of the changes, and then as long as if we feel the need to bump returning employees for more than that 50 cents case by case, then we have that wiggle room, I guess.
Ability to do that. Lifeguard has been a position that, in the past, we have made some adjustments because of the need or the lack of applicants for that.
I agree with Laura. It should be more just for the fact, say, you're a lifeguard, and you have to take certification, and you're out in the heat all day for 1350. It doesn't seem worth it. I think we agree with Laura that it needs to be raised.
Okay, well, I, go ahead, Craig.
Mayor, counsel, I mean, our frontline workers, we've shared this with them, and they've told us it's doable within the budget parameters we have. I mean, I guess I'd suggest we probably defer to their judgment on this, but certainly can respond to what you direct.
I agree. I think the city of Austin is really at the forefront of trying to keep and retain employees. And I think as long as we're competitive, and it's been vetted by department heads and our human resources, I think it's a fair deal.
Yeah, I think that's where I end up too, is I agree. I mean, we want to make sure we can get the labor. I think if Trish and Jason and the department heads feel good about the numbers we have in here, I don't want to open up an unintended, I don't know, Pandora's box of if we change this, then we find out four weeks from now that I guess this added adjusted something in a union contract or something. So it sounds like they've got the flexibility. I'm supportive of it. Obviously, if we can't get the folks that we need, I'm willing to make a change, but.
So we're willing to make a change if we need to.
It's written, it's written in there.
At this, and then if we need, if Trish needs her address and says, I need to go another, whatever amount, we can do that.
It's already written in there, yeah.
Yeah, I draw your attention to item eight in the resolution.
Okay. All right, any further discussion, counsel? If not, looking for a resolution on item number 12?
Move to approve.
Is there a second? I'll second. Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number 13 is a resolution approving change order number six for the waste park treatment plant project. Stephen?
As we discussed at the work session, items that have come up over the last few months for changes for the overall construction project, there are eight work change directives identified. There are some additions and some cost savings alternatives as well. In total, it amounts, change order number six, amounts to $684,630. Of that, it's split between two funding sources, with the domestic budget seeing an increase of $6,431.28, and the industrial budget seeing an increase of $678,198.72. With that, I would recommend approval of this change order.
Very good. Thank you. Counsel, any questions, Mr. Lang? Looking for a resolution for item number 13?
So moved.
Second. Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0, Your Honor.
Thanks, Tom. Item number 14 is resolution approving change order number one for the EQ digester cover replacement. Stephen?
Yes, a different project going on at the same time down the treatment plant is a cover replacement. As we are working with the contractor on some of the coatings and different things as part of the project, there were some recommendations for changes. Those changes involved cost savings to what was going to be installed, and then additional costs for some new coatings or substitutions. All in all, this results in a $4,324.12 increase to the overall project budget, bringing that new total to $2,768,324.12. This project is funded through our industrial budget, and we would recommend approval.
Thank you, Stephen. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Lang? Otherwise, looking for a resolution for item number 14?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number 15 is a resolution declaring the structure at 2,404th Drive Southwest as hazardous. Holly?
Just machinery shod that is in very poor condition.
Looks like it's tipped over.
Yeah, it doesn't look like it's standing up really very well.
Very, very poor.
Yep, that's, that's poor condition. Thank you. Counsel, looking for a resolution on 15?
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number 16 is a motion reviewing the variance request for detached structures from Scott Soderberg. Holly?
Yeah, Mr. Soderberg lives at 2,408 16th Avenue Southwest. At the December 10th, 2024, meeting of the Planning Commission, the commission reviewed the request, which limits properties on a parcel under one acre to two detached accessory structures. The petitioner had two accessory structures when he bought the property, and then he added three, which turned out that he had not permitted those structures, and he needed to get a variance before we would permit them. The structures add up to about 892 square feet. He's allowed 1,200 square feet. So the issue is really just the number of detached structures. After review, the Planning Commission, with seven members present, recommended approving the variance, seven to zero. They made the following findings regarding the request: that the variance is in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the zoning ordinance, that the variance is consistent with the comprehensive plan, the proposal puts the property to use in a reasonable manner, that there are unique circumstances to the property not created by the landowner, and that the variance, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality in which the property is situated. You have any questions? We did get quite a, we sent out quite a few notices. We did not get any comments from anyone.
Excellent. Very good. Thank you. Counsel, looking for a motion to approve or deny the variance request?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 17 is the last of our items on the agenda. A resolution approving a couple donations, $5,000 from CMAC to the Austin Community Band, and $10,000 from CMAC to the Culture and Arts Commission for Electrical Box Project. We thank them for those donations. Looking for a resolution to accept them.
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0, Your Honor.
Thanks, Tom. On to citizens addressing the council. Is there any citizens here wishing to address the council, real items that were on the agenda? Hearing and seeing none, moving on to honorary council member comments. Cindy, thank you for coming back. Welcome back. Any comments from tonight's meeting?
I do. Actually, I have some questions from the last meeting, since this is just my second one. I was, when you guys were talking about the new construction and affordable living and stuff, and they were asking, like, the city to incur 5%, and you guys agreed on 4%? Do you recall what I'm talking about?
Is that some kind of TIF question? I don't remember what that was.
And that's what I was wondering, what the 4% is, what they want from the city to.
Is that the Mill on Main 2 with the same TIF request as 4%?
Mill on Main 2, that's right. The question was the interest rate associated that we've agreed to associate with the tax increment agreement. That 4% is the same rate we agreed to give them on Mill on Main 1. And in essence, what it does is, for TIF district, all the taxes they pay will come to us, and we've agreed to give it back to them to help with the construction. While the dollar amount that they're going to pay in TIF will exceed, will allow us to add 4% to it so that they can maximize the tax increment that goes into the building to cover their construction costs that are eligible for the TIF. So it's going to be like a 15, $16 million project, and I think what's the TIF proposed on that? Couple million dollars or so. But again, that helps entice the developer to build the building, adding a little bit of interest rate to it based on what the market is and what they can get.
So what does that mean with the tax abatement?
Tax abatement is, tax abatement is a little bit different than TIF. So tax abatement is the city, county, school agree to waive your taxes on your house for the first five years. So the city gets paid, the county gets paid, the school gets paid, and then those dollars are rebated back to the homeowner for that five-year period. So there's no real interest rate on that. It's just actually what your taxes you incur on for each parcel or for each taxing authority gets given back to those houses then.
Okay, because I was just wondering that, because it's a tax abatement doing all that for others, and then it raises the tax levy for the citizens here. I'm just trying to see, and I understand the economic growth for it.
In essence, it does. So the new houses, we're not getting this tax levy that are part of a tax abatement. We're not getting a nickel of taxes to help pay for streets, police, et cetera. But after five years, there's no more tax abatement, and that was kind of the enticement council created was, hey, we want you to build these houses. Yeah, we understand it'll be five years before we get the taxes, but once it's there, we'll get the taxes in. So it's kind of an enticement to help individuals build houses.
And Tom, is the idea, whether it's building an apartment or building a house, that without those incentives, the house probably doesn't get built, right? So if the land is worth, call it $1,000 in taxes today with nothing on it, yes, we've, in theory, give up the $20,000 a year for an X number of years that we would get. But if you get $20,000 a year, starting in like year six or year 30 or whatever, into, you know, infinity, it's still better. Eventually, it helps to offset the tax levy, because you get more for that land if it's developed.
And that's the whole goal. That's the whole goal, is that that helps. In fact, TIF law requires a but-for test. If not for tax increment, this project wouldn't be done. And a lot of times in our tax increment projects, they're like, let's say it's a 25-year project. We actually can decertify them after 18 or 19 years, because they've paid more in taxes than they planned, and we're going to give them so much from, based on the original budget. So once that budget's been paid out, we can't collect anymore. Holiday Inn was one, for example, where we decertified early, because Holiday Inn had paid all the revenue we'd projected in that tax increment district. So we, by law, can't collect anymore, so we take it off, and then the citizens see that tax base, which then, in theory, lowers their taxes, because we have one more parcel paying the taxes.
Okay, thank you.
I found a concept really helpful when I was trying to figure all of this out, and probably am still trying to figure it all out, which is that, in general, when somebody outside the city has an idea for economic growth, they come to the city and they ask for help, and the city is never going to say, oh, we'll just write you a check for that. We come up with these complicated schemes, so to, sorry, complicated mechanisms.
Thank you. Schemes is a little strong.
Yeah, complicated mechanisms where projected taxes are given back, or forgiven, or pre-forgiven, or whatever. So that's the bigger idea, is that as government, we're bound in the ways that we can help encourage economic growth. And so it takes a lot of lawyers and accountants to come up with the mechanisms, and then they're very difficult for the general public to understand. So it's a great question, and it never hurts to be reminded of the details of how it works.
A classic one is new tech and new development we have out, and that, they could have gone to Albert Lee, Oatana, wherever. So in order for us to entice them, A, we had the land, and B, we were able to, Craig getting through his negotiations with them, was able to give them a tax increment deal that bridged the gap enough, they said, okay, we'll come to Austin. 20, 30 jobs, but, you know, the actual tax revenue off that building, we won't get for 25 years. But the 30 people, if they buy homes here in town or build homes, the tax abatement maybe for a while, but they'll grow the economy, grow the tax base, and looking long-term for the future, in essence, is what we try to do.
That's good to know, because, I mean, as, you know.
Good question.
As another community resident, you know, with the increase on property tax and everything, which has become a burden. I went back to getting a second job, but with the definition of everything, or the explanation, I should say, not schemes, but, understand, and I understand the economic growth, but to put it in line with everything to understand is great.
It's a great question.
So if anybody asks me, now I can explain it to them.
Really? Because I can't. Craig?
The only other thing I'd add is that I think the question was, why isn't it a higher interest rate, given where interest rates are currently? It's to our benefit that it will return back to the taxes faster at the 4% than a higher interest rate. So it's to our benefit, but essentially what we advanced was, we're offering the same outline that we did on the first phase of the project to the second phase. So that's where we kind of landed, so.
And they wanted more, but we said, no, that we're doing the same as we did before. Excellent.
So it's actually to our benefit.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Cindy. Anything else? All right. Moving on to reports and recommendations. Craig?
I have nothing.
On to counsel. Paul? No, it's both Joyce. Wouldn't that be fun to mix it up a little?
Nothing, Your Honor. Thank you.
All right, Paul?
Just want to say thank you to all the city employees for your hard work every day, every week, and to the Austin Fire Department and the Police Department a few weeks ago for that garage fire. I lived a few blocks away, and I just looked towards my parents' house. All I saw was a glow, so I thought, well, I better head down there. And parked and got one up by one of the pumper trucks and watched the guys actively work on this two-story garage, fully engulfed, cars involved. And to watch the Police Department, Fire Department work together to put this blaze out was really. was really neat to see. So thank you, both departments for your hard work. And I, to watch you guys in action was really, really important to see. So thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Jason?
Uh, three quick things. Number one, he's not here, but we'll say thank you anyway. Congratulate Councilmember Baker and thank him for his service to the community and volunteering. Um, looking forward to having Councilmember Waller back on the council here at our next meeting. But since apparently Jeff's already done. How we want to put that on the record. Uh, no, number two, had the opportunity today with, um, some folks from the Lions and Representative Mueller to talk to a group of students at Pacelli. Um, and they asked some really, really good questions around, you know, the city. And it was interesting to kind of hear what was on their mind. And so number one, I think if we could get a Chick-fil-A and a Starbucks, that would be incredibly popular. So Craig, let's work on that from a port authority standpoint. You know, they had asked some questions just around like plowing and what our strategies are and, you know, how we think about, you know, the order. And so Stephen and I actually talked about that a little bit earlier today. Um, and just, you know, really sharp young kids who are really interested in economic development. A lot of, hey, what's going on with ShopCo? What's going on with Yonkers? And so, you know, people are certainly, you know, paying attention to things around the community. I think there's an interest in continuing to grow Austin and fill up vacant buildings. And they also had a pretty specific question around turning left off of a bridge. Stephen informed me that's a state issue. So we put that back in Representative Mueller's court to, to go get an update on that. Um, and school Vikings.
Ja- Jason, when they asked about strategy, did you tell them that you go with hope?
Hope always, yes. I think only a couple fell asleep. So I felt good about my part of the presentation.
Thank you, Jason. I'm pretty sure that Councilmember Fisher and I are not surprised that there's some intelligent people in Pacelli School. There's two of us that aren't surprised.
Look for your pictures up there.
Yeah. Mikey?
Uh, just want to thank, uh, the, if you have not been out and about in Austin the last couple of weeks, shame on you because there's just so many community events going on to celebrate the holidays. Uh, the Paramount is offering a free show this Thursday, Who Brought the Humbug is their Christmas gift to the community before they shut down for renovations. So if you haven't been out yet, take that in. Um, I also want to wish, um, Councilman Baker, thank you for his years of service on the council. Um, I will miss, uh, him in my ear every now and then during council meetings. Um, and yeah, that's it.
Thank you, Mike. Laura?
Um, a couple of things. Uh, I want to congratulate the Culture and Arts Commission on their grant funding from CMAC. And we approved it here tonight, but just to expand a little bit on exactly what we're talking about, um, there's been a lot of attention in the community about utility boxes being frequently tagged. And so we're working with Austin Utilities to identify some of the most visible. Um, so far they've identified a hundred that have been tagged. So we're going to have to narrow that scope a little to the most visible. Um, but that's our, our, um, idea is to, um, get graphic wraps, uh, made by Featherlight and put over. They'll be, um, artwork by local youth. So, uh, trying to, um, reframe around graffiti and celebrate our youth creativity, um, in a positive way in the community. Um, I also, uh, was not able to be here for the truth and taxation meeting, um, because of a standing conflict with the Parks Recreation and Forest Street Board meeting, which I would love to have solved somehow magically in the future. Um, but I wanted to just comment that I, um, I think that our choices for the tax levy for 2025 are the right ones. But I also, looking out over our funding horizon, we, we can't continue, um, the, this level of increases to the tax levy. And I'm also not willing to cut back what we pay our employees or employee benefits. So I think, um, as a council and as department heads, we're going to need to come together and find some